Yes. Oh, yeah. I see. Well, I saw you. Yeah.
There he is again. Oh, my goodness. She's going on like a maniac.
Oh, these are September 8, 2025. The latency council. Home board, please.
Counselor Tchadno.
President.
Counselor Kryberg.
Counselor Wencesky.
Here.
Counselor Lard.
Here.
Counselor Stibbets.
Here.
Counselor Shaw.
Here.
Counselor Coltrier.
Here.
Assistant prosecutor.
If the record could reflect that court, that Counselor Kryberg is a misdemeanor. At this point, I'd like Pastor Floyd to go in our church to come and hear the invitation.
Heavenly Father, we come to you thanking you for your goodness, for your mercy, for your plan that you have for this community, Lord. Your plans are always for good and not for evil, to give us a plan and a future and a hope. And, Lord, we thank you for that. Lord, you said in your word that if we trust in the Lord with all our heart and lean out on our own understanding, acknowledge you and follow your ways, that you would direct our paths. So, Lord, I pray for everyone on this council. Lord, I pray that they would seek you, seek your wisdom, and that you would guide and direct the affairs of this city and of our community. And, Lord, we thank you for it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Would you all join me in standing for the pledge allegiance? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to take just a moment and welcome Jackie Steckel to the meeting. Thank you for joining us tonight. Welcome. We're going to open the meeting for public comment. This time, request anyone wishing to address the council. Please step to the lectern and speak directly into the microphone. State your name, street address, or ward, city of residence, and organizational affiliation, if that's appropriate. Once you've done this, you should be recognized for three minutes. Please address all comments to this chair. If the time limit expires during any comment, I would ask that the speaker respectfully finish their sentence and yield the floor. If you wish to present materials directly to the council, I ask you to leave those materials on the shelf below the microphone. And then there'll be another opportunity for public comment following communications from city officials. And the floor is now open. Good evening.
Good evening. Tom Rada, Third Ward. This last Friday, I was occupied in a rare stint, fortunately, as a defendant in a criminal case against me, generated by the city and taken up by your contracted prosecuting attorney, Beth Hand. A motion for dismissal was before the court on the basis of my true due process rights being violated by the city by invoking a letter of trespass against me, saying that I could not set foot on public property. It seemed as if it was 2011 again, when the city tried the same stunt to prevent me from stepping foot on City Hall and police station property, under threat of charging me with a misdemeanor. Mayor Barnett, Chief Barnett, back then, helped draft a policy that this council passed and placed on me, and he eventually went to federal court before it's the city settled rather than see themselves lose a lot more money for their violation of my rights to due process, which prohibited me from voting and coming to council meetings without the threat of being arrested. Triteful city governments do not learn easy. Last year, you bestowed me another letter of trespass, this time for a city park that is open all day, every day, and the only transgression I did was survive an ill-conceived and liability-rich deer call, almost being shot due to this council's inability to hold it safely. The city would never tell me why this sanction was imposed on me, or how I could challenge the taking of my right to be at a park for a month. And, of course, they wouldn't apologize for endangering my life by not securing the park that afternoon, or clearing out the area before the shooting started. How many park violations were committed that night by your armed visitors because this council was remiss in suspending park rules in the city code? A lot, but your worst transgression was toeing the line that allowed a police captain to be judge, jury, and executioner of my right to walk through a public park and extend it for three weeks after the last planned deer call. This was a purely punitive measure, and Judge Millbrook's court saw it as such, and I was given nothing close to my constitutional due process rights by this city. Case dismissed. Your trespassing charge against me is over, but don't worry, I'm coming back as a plaintiff for the next round. Perfect timing.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening.
Gene Kyle, 304 East Court Street, Luddington. However, tonight, I'm here representing the Luddington Senior Citizens Advisory Board. A few months ago, this board took on a new task. That task was to answer one simple question, and it went like this: What might we do now that we aren't currently doing that would benefit senior citizens? So each of those board members took that back, thought about it, wrote down answers to that question. The next meeting, we brought up discussion. Everybody listened to everybody else, lots of good ideas, and the first thing that came to mind, and everyone agreed on it, was: We don't do a good job of keeping you, the city council, and other members of the community apprised of what's going on with senior citizens. So we decided we'd try and change that. So tonight, I'm beginning my first of senior moments, at least with this board. And the senior moments came about as a result of that discussion, and we decided that I would come first tonight to explain it, and then subsequently down the road, I'll be coming back with different issues, thoughts, ideas, information about anything having to do with senior citizens. So what's the purpose of these senior moments? Well, the first purpose is simply to inform and educate city council, and hopefully other members, on issues pertinent to senior citizens. Secondly, to encourage council members, and hopefully others, to advocate for senior citizens and keep that population in mind as the city plans for the future. So three key words in that purpose: Inform, educate, and advocate. So what is this Senior Citizens Advisory Board? Well, we are a ten-member board, each person serving a three-year term. Terms are renewable. Each member is recommended by the mayor and appointed by city council. Members are also involved with the Luddington Senior Center either as an advocate, as someone who volunteers, or someone who actually provides services. And in some cases, we have people who do all of those. What are the duties of the board? Well, the duties are, first, to provide guidance regarding the establishment and provision of services to Luddington senior citizens. Second, to encourage, promote, assist, and safeguard the rights and abilities of senior citizens to maintain maximum health, wealth, well-being, and independence. Lastly, to recommend programs, activities, and policies for the operation of the Luddington Senior Center. So this evening, I have two different things under the podium for you to take a look at. One is simply the list of board members, including email addresses and phone numbers, if you care to contact any of us. And secondly is the monthly, quarterly, the monthly active-living brochure that's put out that explains senior services for the county, and of course, Luddington is in there.
Thank you.
I thank you.
Anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Jeff Henry, Ray's Marina, resident of Muskegon. We spent the past year uncovering how decisions were hidden from the First Marina in 1972. Through the evidence that I, we'd look through here, three names keep coming up: Buddy Reed, Buddy Reed, and Buddy Reed. His dual roles in Lansing and here locally. The public was told one story, while the real decisions were buried in committee reports. That lack of transparency is why our marinas can't sustain themselves today, and why private marinas were undercut. The same problem continues now. That's all I have on that right now. We're working through that evidence. Mixing zones. Our chance to be transparent together to the city. It's building up. It's coming together. A mixing zone. What we have out here that I've mentioned, I think it would be interesting so people can understand how the PFAS got here, because that's a whole different story. I talked about a little one going in the lake and peeing in the lake. Well, that's a mix zone. That child just made it a mix zone. So it's straight steel and wire. They had a three-inch water line down on the bottom of their floor, and when they needed to empty out their tanks and treat those, they opened up a valve, and those, that three-inch water line, three inches of water is a lot of water. They open up that line, and they open up the line for the plating solution, and those to come in together, open up that three-inch line. Now we're peeing in the lake, because what goes to the wastewater treatment can't be detected. That's how they got away with it. And they put it into the dump in Scottville. That became a mixing zone at the wastewater treatment plant, and it destroyed it. It took it out. It took the charge out of it. It couldn't fight against itself. So Dow Chemical, under the federal government's leaning, built a mixing zone in Luddington. And that's what we have out here. They're making a tremendous amount of product that probably would take 32 different plants, manufacturing facilities, if they didn't have our lake, your lake, to mix it up out here. Transparency is coming. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening.
Child of the Most High God, Daniel Johnson, 503 North Lavina Street. Luke 8:17, "For nothing secret shall not be made manifest, neither anything hid that shall not be known and come abroad." I would like to start by thanking Mayor Barnett and Attorney Hammersley for the clarification last meeting on the severability clause, and how that clause is commonplace in ordinances and contains the word unconstitutional as a standard procedure. But I also noticed that every meeting packet starts with this. This here is the only page that's actually searchable throughout that whole document. I wonder why that is. Jeff laid out a pretty good history. I'll just say this: Public shouldn't have to FOIA to chase comment, the committee meeting minutes, to know what's going on. Andy's place has already been cleared. If the issue wasn't his fault, why is his occupancy still stopped? When the decisions are buried, trust erodes. When they're discussed openly, people can respect the outcome, even if they disagree. FOIA's, F-O-I-A, Freedom of Information Act, shouldn't have to be paid for. Should it? I don't believe so. It's people's, people's information. And when they're charged for that information, hmm, isn't that part of the government official's responsibility that's paid by the taxpayers? That's included in their salary, if I'm not mistaken. You know, it's, it's a real shame. It's a sad shame that all this has to come out this way, can actually work together, accomplish what needs to be accomplished, and do it openly. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other public comment? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to item number five on the agenda. Let's say approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the approval of the August 25, 2025 regular meeting minutes, the payment of bills, and adopting this agenda as presented, and be looking for a motion and support.
So moved.
Support. Okay, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Item number six, invite Mr. Wayne Anderson to come to the lectern. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Wayne Anderson. I'm a resident of Mason County, not the city of Luddington, but I grew up just outside of the city of Luddington. And so I have a, and I spend my time in the city of Luddington, so I have a close connection, even though I'm not a resident of the city. And I've always admired Cartier Park and the work that's went on there. And so I had an interest in giving a token of my appreciation for what the city and its partners have done for that park. So I called Kathy Wencesky, and she immediately became the project manager. And any questions I asked, Kathy answered, or said, "I will get the answer from someone who knows the answer." And we worked through this process, replacing the gazebo at the Cartier Park on Lincoln Lake. And, you know, I was always impressed with the park because of the way it's managed and run, not only the camping part, but the trails and that. And I don't spend a lot of time there, but I do get there occasionally. But I grew up on the east end of Lincoln Lake, out on the end of Rath Avenue. And the neighborhood joke was that I didn't live at the lake, I lived on the lake. So I spent a lot of time on that lake, and it has a lot of really special memories for me. So when I see the city doing something there and maintaining it the way they do, I really want to be a part of that. So another thing I was really impressed with at that park is I see the collaboration. I see the Mason Lake Conservation District working there. I see North Country SISMA removing the invasive plants and that, working on that. I see a few doing plant removals and also things, and I'm sure there's others that I'm not aware of that really add to the value of that park. So I just wanted to be a part of that, and, you know, I want to thank the city of Luddington for providing that park and making it such a great experience for everyone that enjoys it, not only the residents, but it's a big asset when the campers are here, the summer people are here, or us people out in the county come into town, and we got a half hour to kill, that's a great place to go and walk, or to just spend time. So I just wanted to thank the city of Luddington, and that's my way of doing it.
Thank you, Wayne. Will you just stay there for just a second, too? Wayne did donate the money for the gazebo. We had a contractor come in, and it was really interesting. I went with Wayne and Kirk Cathmer, who was our supervisor of parks there, and, and the contractor. So Wayne had said, "The supervisor of the parks, the guy who's going to maintain this, has to have the say in it." And so we went over there, Kirk and the contractor, and Wayne started talking about the footings on this building, uh, uh, uh. Anyways, they got it all worked out within probably 40 minutes, and they were satisfied with everything they wanted done, and everyone was ready to go, and we started right away. So they were the construction people, not me so much. But I just want to read something that I put together, Wayne. "The city of Luddington is proud to announce the completion of the new gazebo at beautiful Cartier Park. This addition was made possible through the generous donation of Wayne Anderson, whose kindness and vision have created a welcoming space for residents and visitors alike. We also extend our heartfelt thanks to the dedicated city of Luddington staff, whose ongoing care and maintenance ensure that the gazebo will remain a place of enjoyment for years to come. Together, generosity and dedication have created a lasting gift to our community. Thanks so much, Wayne."
Thank you. All righty. We'll move on to item number seven, and that'll be the first committee report, will be Finance and Personnel, Counselor Wencesky.
Yes, I have no report tonight, but we do have one action item to consider. This was up for a first hearing two weeks ago, so it's to adopt ordinance number 570-25, a five-year lease for Axon. And just a little reminder, the Luddington Police Department has utilized Axon as the body worn cameras, TASER electrical control device, Fleet Video, and cloud-based data and video evidence storage vendor for several years. Currently, we have five multi-year contracts with Axon, with expiration dates ranging from 2026 to 2028. Axon has agreed to terminate all existing contracts and rewrite the contracts into one unified five-year contract. Additionally, Axon has agreed to lock in 2025 pricing for all five years of the contract, resulting in substantial cost savings of about $92,000 savings. The entire contract for five years is $210,267.53, and I so move that we accept the Axon five-year contract.
Support.
Okay, a motion by Counselor Wencesky, support by Counselor Large, to adopt ordinance number 570-25, as stated as a five-year lease to Axon for those that described equipment. Any comments or questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify. Oops, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Counselor Stibbets.
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counselor Wencesky?
Yes.
Counselor Trizano?
Aye.
Counselor Large?
Yes.
Counselor Bulger?
Yes.
Six ayes, one ahsa?
Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to Building and Licensing, Long Range Planning, and Industrial Development, Counselor Trizano.
No report, but one action item, and that's to adopt ordinance number 569-25, removal of definition in the short-term rental ordinance. Following the adoption of the United Development Ordinance, several updates are necessary to clean up inconsistencies and conflicting language within the city's ordinance. One such item is the definition of limited short-term rentals. This use has been discontinued, rendering the definition both irrelevant and potentially confusing. To ensure clarity and consistency, it is recommended that the following definition be removed from the short-term rental ordinance. Quote, "Limited short-term rental means the rental of any premises for no more than two rental periods of up to 14 days, not to exceed 14 days total in any calendar year", unquote. And I so move.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Counselor Trizano, support by Counselor Stibbets, to adopt ordinance number 569-25, the removal of definition in short-term rental ordinance. Any comments or questions?
Just a little history on that. I was here when we did the short-term rental, and when we first put it in, there was some concern from people in the community who wanted to possibly rent their home out. They'd leave the house, rent it for a week to someone, and then move back into the house. And we decided we'd let them do that twice, for a total of 14 days for the year. I don't think it's been used, and so I think it's a good idea to take this out, because it is a little confusing. Thanks for doing that, John.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Wencesky?
Yes.
Counselor Bulger?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counselor Trizano?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counselor Large?
Yes.
Counselor Bulger?
Yes.
Counselor Trizano? And Counselor Stibbets?
Yes.
Six ayes, one ahsa?
Motion carried. Thank you.
And that's all we have for tonight.
Good, thank you. Moving on to Building and Licensing, Long Range Planning, and Industrial Development, Counselor Trizano.
No report, but one action item, and that's to adopt ordinance number 569-25, removal of definition in the short-term rental ordinance. Following the adoption of the United Development Ordinance, several updates are necessary to clean up inconsistencies and conflicting language within the city's ordinance. One such item is the definition of limited short-term rentals. This use has been discontinued, rendering the definition both irrelevant and potentially confusing. To ensure clarity and consistency, it is recommended that the following definition be removed from the short-term rental ordinance. Quote, "Limited short-term rental means the rental of any premises for no more than two rental periods of up to 14 days, not to exceed 14 days total in any calendar year", unquote. And I so move.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Counselor Trizano, support by Counselor Stibbets, to adopt ordinance number 569-25, the removal of definition in short-term rental ordinance. Any comments or questions?
Just a little history on that. I was here when we did the short-term rental, and when we first put it in, there was some concern from people in the community who wanted to possibly rent their home out. They'd leave the house, rent it for a week to someone, and then move back into the house. And we decided we'd let them do that twice, for a total of 14 days for the year. I don't think it's been used, and so I think it's a good idea to take this out, because it is a little confusing. Thanks for doing that, John.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Wencesky?
Yes.
Counselor Bulger?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counselor Trizano?
Aye.
And Counselor Stibbets?
Yes.
Six ayes, one ahsa?
Motion carried. Thank you.
Your Honor, I do have a very quick report, and that's on the changes to the UDO. Text and zoning is going to meet tomorrow to finalize recommendations to the Planning Commission. At the Planning Commission meeting last week, we went over some of the changes, and there's some additional ones to do. Then those changes will go to the Planning Commission for its meeting first Wednesday in October, and hopefully it'll be before council, at council's first meeting in October.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Public Safety, Public Utilities. Counselor Bulger.
I have no report tonight. I have two action items. The first is adopting ordinance number 568-25, which involves a change to our sidewalk ordinance section. It's
Spend my time in the city of Luddington, so I have a close connection even though I'm not a resident of the city. And I've always admired Cartier Park and the work that's went on there. And so I had an interest in giving a token of my appreciation for what the city and its partners have done for that park. So I called Kathy Wenceski, and she immediately became the project manager. And any questions I asked, Kathy answered or said, "I will get the answer from someone who knows the answer." And we worked through this process, replacing the gazebo at the Cartier Park on Lincoln Lake. And, you know, I was always impressed with the park because of the way it's managed and run, not only the camping part, but the trails and that. And I don't spend a lot of time there, but I do get there occasionally. But I grew up on the east end of Lincoln Lake, out on the end of Rath Avenue. And the neighborhood joke was that I didn't live at the lake, I lived on the lake. So I spent a lot of time on that lake, and it has a lot of really special memories for me. So when I see the city doing something there and maintaining it the way they do, I really want to be a part of that. So another thing I was really impressed with at that park is I see the collaboration. I see the Mason Lake Conservation District working there. I see North Country Sisma removing the invasive plants and that, working on that. I see a few doing plant removals and also things. And I'm sure there's others that I'm not aware of that really add to the value of that park. So I just wanted to be a part of that. And, you know, I want to thank the city of Luddington for providing that park and making it such a great experience for everyone that enjoys it. Not only the residents, but it's a big asset when the campers are here, the summer people are here, or us people out in the county come into town and we got a half hour to kill, that's a great place to go and walk or to just spend time. So I just wanted to thank the city of Luddington, and that's my way of doing it.
Thank you, Wayne. Will you just stay there for just a second, too? Wayne did donate the money for the gazebo. We had a contractor come in, and it was really interesting. I went with Wayne and Kirk Cathmer, who was our supervisor of parks there, and the contractor. So Wayne had said, "The supervisor of the parks, the guy who's going to maintain this, has to have the say in it." And so we went over there, Kirk and the contractor, and Wayne started talking about the footings on this building, uh, uh, uh. Anyways, they got it all worked out within probably 40 minutes, and they were satisfied with everything they wanted done, and everyone was ready to go, and we started right away. So they were the construction people, not me so much. But I just want to read something that I put together, Wayne. "The city of Luddington is proud to announce the completion of the new gazebo at beautiful Cartier Park. This addition was made possible through the generous donation of Wayne Anderson, whose kindness and vision have created a welcoming space for residents and visitors alike. We also extend our heartfelt thanks to the dedicated City of Luddington staff, whose ongoing care and maintenance ensure that the gazebo will remain a place of enjoyment for years to come. Together, generosity and dedication have created a lasting gift to our community." Thanks so much, Wayne.
Thank you.
All righty. We'll move on to item number seven, and that'll be the first committee report will be Finance and Personnel, Council Wenceski.
Yes, I have no report tonight, but we do have one action item to consider. This was up for a first hearing two weeks ago, so it's to adopt ordinance number 570-25, a five-year lease for Axon. And just a little reminder, the Luddington Police Department has utilized Axon as the body worn cameras, TASER electrical control device, Fleet Video, and cloud-based data and video evidence storage vendor for several years. Currently, we have five multi-year contracts with Axon, with expiration dates ranging from 2026 to 2028. Axon has agreed to terminate all existing contracts and rewrite the contracts into one unified five-year contract. Additionally, Axon has agreed to lock in 2025 pricing for all five years of the contract, resulting in substantial cost savings of about $92,000 savings. The entire contract for five years is $210,267.53, and I so move that we accept the Axon five-year contract.
Support.
Okay, a motion by Council Wenceski, support by Council Large to adopt ordinance number 570-25, as stated as a five-year lease to Axon for those that described equipment. Any comments or questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify. Oops, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes. Council Stibbets.
Yes.
Council Shaw.
Yes.
Council Wenceski.
Yes.
Council Trizano.
Aye.
Council Large.
Yes.
Council Bulger.
Yes.
Six ayes, one absinthe.
Motion carried. Thank you.
And that's all we have for tonight.
Good, thank you. Moving on to Building and Licensing, Long Range Planning and Industrial Development, Council Trizano.
No report, but one action item, and that's to adopt ordinance number 569-25, removal of definition of the short-term rental ordinance. Following the adoption of the United Development Ordinance, several updates are necessary to clean up inconsistencies and conflicting language within the city's ordinance. One such item is the definition of limited short-term rentals. This use has been discontinued, rendering the definition both irrelevant and potentially confusing. To ensure clarity and consistency, it is recommended that the following definition be removed from the short-term rental ordinance. Quote, "Limited short-term rental means the rental of any premises for no more than two rental periods of up to 14 days, not to exceed 14 days total in any calendar year," unquote, and I so move.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Council Trizano, support by Council Stibbets to adopt ordinance number 569-25, the removal of definition in short-term rental ordinance. Any comments or questions?
Just a little history on that. I was here when we did the short-term rental, and when we first put it in, there was some concern from people in the community who wanted to possibly rent their home out. They'd leave the house, rent it for a week to someone, and then move back into the house. And we decided we'd let them do that twice for a total of 14 days for the year. I don't think it's been used, and so I think it's a good idea to take this out because it is a little confusing. Thanks for doing that, John.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Council Wenceski.
Yes.
Council Bulger.
Yes.
Council Shaw.
Yes.
Council Large.
Yes.
Council Trizano.
Aye.
And Council Stibbets.
Yes.
Six ayes, one absinthe.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Your Honor, I do have a very quick report, and that's on the changes to the UDO. Text and zoning is going to meet tomorrow to finalize recommendations to the Planning Commission. At the Planning Commission meeting last week, we went over some of the changes, and there's some additional ones to do. Then those changes will go to the Planning Commission for its meeting first Wednesday in October, and hopefully it'll be before Council, at Council's first meeting in October.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Public Safety, Public Utilities. Council Bulger.
I have no report tonight. I have two action items. The first is adopting ordinance number 568-25, which involves a change to our sidewalk ordinance section 46-71. When we adopted the UDO, we changed the appeal provision by having the Board of Zoning Appeals handle appeals from the sidewalk ordinance. Some people are compelled because of sale of a home, or perhaps because the sidewalk has deteriorated, to make repairs, and the city shares in the cost of those. But the appeal procedure there now is outdated. This change will make the 4671 coincide with the appeal provision in the UDO, so that I move that we adopt ordinance 568-25.
Okay, do we have support for that?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Council Bulger, support by Council Large to adopt ordinance number 568-25, which is a change to the sidewalk ordinance. Any comments or questions?
I have a question. Council Bulger, all the exceptions that have been in the current code, are they being deleted or they remain?
They are deleted, and the standards now which apply for the zoning board of appeals would govern the appeal under the sidewalk ordinance.
Okay, thank you. I just needed clarification of that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Council Shaw.
Yes.
Council Large.
Yes.
Council Bulger.
Yes.
Council Stibbets.
Yes.
Council Trizano.
Aye.
And Council Wenceski.
Yes.
Six ayes, one absinthe.
Motion carried. Thank you.
And one other item. The chief has negotiated an agreement with the police union on certain provision which deals with his ability to assign officers, and this will give him more flexibility in keeping his officers assigned. I asked the chief if he wants to clarify that or add anything to it.
I'll just say that currently, our collective bargaining agreement stipulates that the officer's bid shifts by seniority, and that I have very little, if any, ability to make any adjustments to that. What this letter of understanding does is allows me to assign shifts based off a number of reasons for the duration of this current collective bargaining. So that does give me the ability to then assign shifts and assign officers, which is a significant advantage to us to be able to do that.
And as the chief noted, the union members have agreed to this change, so, you know, I think this would be good for the city, good for the police department, and I would move that the council approve the letter of understanding.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Council Bulger, support by Council Shaw to approve the letter of understanding with P O L C. Any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. And that's all I have tonight, Your Honor. All right, thank you. Moving on to Cemetery Parks, Recreation and Waterfront, Council Stibbets.
Thank you. I have no official report today, but I do want to encourage all of you to, of course, go check out that new gazebo that was given to us by Wayne Anderson, so make sure you go check that out. And first on the action items is to look at the purchase of two new columbarium niches. In March 2011, the city council adopted a resolution allowing the principal from the cemetery perpetual care fund to be used for capital expenditures, such as the purchase of a columbarium. Upon council approval, a portion of sales revenues from columbarium niches is reinvested into the perpetual care fund. The cemetery master plan includes five columbariums. The first two units are sold out, and the third is approximately 70% sold. Demand indicates it's time to purchase the next unit. For reference, a columbarium is a structure with niches designed to hold urns containing cremated remains. Each of the cemetery's columbariums contains 60 double niches. The number of cremation burials has been steadily increasing each year. Purchasing additional columbarium will ensure we continue to meet community demand, so we're recommending purchasing the remaining two units at this time to reduce long-term costs. The cost of a single columbarium is approximately $66,438. Purchasing the two together would total $121,685, saving the city about $11,191. Savings result from vendor discounts and reduced costs for foundation work, crane use, which would only require one trip. We do have the cemetery sexton Kirk Cathmer here, if anyone has any questions, and I make a motion to approve the purchase of two columbariums by utilizing perpetual care funds.
Oh, moved. I mean, a support, excuse me. Sorry.
All right, we have the motion by Council Stibbets, support by Council Shaw to approve the purchase of two columbariums using the perpetual care fund, the principal in there. Any comments or questions?
I also just want to make one more comment that I didn't mention. So if you look on page 50, you've got that columbarium project estimate, and as we know, things don't ever get cheaper. They always become more expensive. So these are just a guess of how much we're saving based off of what the cost is currently, so we can assume that we are saving even more than what I mentioned because of potential inflation of products and services.
Just to follow up on that, you mean if we were to wait and buy them, buy one now and one later? That's what you're saying?
Correct. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Mayor. If we can have Kirk come up maybe just for a second. So Kirk, this perpetual care fund that we have, it's been around for a while.
Yes.
And have we used it for anything else?
Well, for other columbariums, our first three columbariums, we used it for also sections of roads. We just got approved a month ago to start some historic headstone preservation, so we used part of it for that.
Okay.
Yeah, so some different things.
So some of the money from people that buying these niches, is it graves, too, that go into the perpetual fund?
Yes, yes.
Some money goes in to replace that. So here's a question. If these things are selling this quickly, pretty quickly it sounds like, do you plan on putting more of these columbariums and possibly into the cemetery?
Actually, yes.
Okay, so you think that that's going to be an ongoing thing? Thanks.
If I could just ask an unrelated question, and I know I'm hitting you off the top of your head, so forgive me in advance, but of the area set aside for the cemetery, how many total acres is that?
We have right now about 45 acres that are developed, and we have another 45 acres that we still can develop in the future.
Okay, so roughly half is being developed, as I understand what you just said. And of that, do you have any idea what percentage of the first 45 has been developed already? And if you don't, that's fine.
Well, no, I mean, 45 acres are developed, cleared. We still have probably about 800 graves available to be sold.
Thank you. That's what I was getting at. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Kirk.
So we have a motion by Council Stibbets. Sorry.
That's okay.
Do we have support?
Council Shaw.
Shaw supported that.
I forgot to do that. Okay, we have, so we have the, we have the motion by Council Stibbets, the support by Council Shaw, approve the rating, I'm sorry, purchase of the two columbariums. I got ahead of myself. That's what happened. So anyway, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Now item B.
Perfect. So next on our agenda is to look at approving the rate increase at Cartier Park, and Cartier Park Camp manager Russ Soper is here, in case anyone has any questions. Cartier Park does a rate study every two years, so the last study was done in 2023, and we made some adjustments and raised rates by $2 a day and $4 a day for July and August. The rate increase will significantly help bring some of our larger projects within scope. They are looking at a retaining wall and leveling off electric sites, roughly 75,000, paving the rest of the roads and making them ADA compliant, costing about $600,000 to $800,000. The office walls are leaking more, and the office needs to be moved, installing a bigger lift station for more hookup campsites, replacing 30 amp with 50 amp, and this rate increase will also help pay off the new bathhouse sooner as well. If you look on page 59 in your packet, you'll see the proposed pre-July and post-Labor Day pricing. The rustic campground proposed is the same as it was last year, and then you'll notice that electric, water and electric, 30 amp and 50 amp, all go up $2 respectively. And then the proposed July and August pricing will go up an additional $2, so making that a $4 rate increase. You'll also see in your packet some of the other local campground rates and how we compare to those campground rates, and I move to approve the rate increase at Cartier Park.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Council Stibbets, support by Council Wenceski to approve the rate increase in Cartier Park. Any comments or questions?
Since we have Russ here, maybe he can come up. Russ, I have a couple of questions. Make it worth your while to get to this meeting, you know? And I just want to say, I thought Kirk Cathmer did a great job on the packet, showing pictures and monies, and Russ did, too, to explain what was going on. So Russ, I had a question. You said here, "We're looking to add a site lock fee." What, for $5? What is that?
So in the program, in the software that they use online, there's a fee where people can pay that and not get moved. Most campgrounds have always had it. We didn't want to do it, so we didn't. However, they still see that, and everybody is still in panic mode. So we're going to open it to where if they want to pay it and lock it in, they can, and if they don't, they don't.
Okay, okay. And I had another question, too. It says here, $20 per month per extra freezer and/or refrigerator. One outside freezer or refrigerator is free? They have refrigerators and freezers outside?
You come in August, you will notice numerous freezers plugged in outside for their salmon for the people who are staying a few weeks.
Okay, so those are outside, but they're free, but inside, if they want inside, they pay them?
You'll never know, because we don't go inside your camper, but it's all the outdoor chest freezers. One guy had four chest freezers outside his camper.
Wow.
Which also caused electrical issues.
Okay. So thank, I never thought anybody'd have a freezer outside, but thank you. Thanks for that explanation.
You know, Council Wenceski, I just have to tell you that I asked that very question at our meeting because I was like, "Do people really bring freezers and refrigerators camping?" But apparently, they do.
I had a picture from three weeks ago where somebody brought a commercial ice machine and had the hose. We had to go and hook it, hook to the shared water system in the park.
Really?
It's luxurious camping.
That's good to rough it, so.
Right.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so we have the.
Thanks, Russ.
As stated, we have the motion and support. All those in favor of approving the rate increase for Cartier Park signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
And that is all, Your Honor.
Thank you. City Council, any items of business you want to bring forward, discussion, anything like that?
I have an item.
Yes.
At the Planning Commission meeting last week, the Planning Commission passed the following motion with respect to the Andy's Restaurant. Motion to approve the special land use amendment, application of ASR Real Estate LLC, the applicant for 129 West Luddington Avenue, the property, subject to the following terms and conditions. The amended special land use conditionally approves only the north-south positioning of the second-floor overhang and its overall north-south length, as depicted on the Westshore License Exhibit, having a last revision date on August 18, 2025, the plan. The amended special land use shall not be effective, and no action may be taken by the applicant in reliance thereon unless and until such time as the city council has, in its sole discretion, approved a license agreement that permits the second-floor overhang and its supporting columns and footings to encroach into the city's right-of-way, as depicted on the plan. If the council does not approve such a license agreement, the amended special land use shall be void and without effect. The amended special land use does not otherwise approve or any other aspects of the plan, including the location of the main building, location of the curb and gutter, or other matters depicted in the plan. The special land use amendment approval in no way modifies any other aspect of the approved site plan for the property, and in particular, does not modify the requirement imposed on the approved site plan that there be a separation distance of 1'10 inches between the face of the curb and the nearest portion of the front face of each column that supports the second-floor overhang. I've been asked by a number of people why this wasn't on the agenda for the night. Well, the answer is very simple. It's not on the agenda because we haven't gotten a proposal from the construction company or the LLC on how to resolve the columns. A stop-work order was placed on August 6th. It's been one month, and there has been no communication from Andy's team on how they propose to fix it. So the stop-work order will continue until we get a proposal from them that city council, in its sole discretion, can agree with or not agree with. I say that because the city continues to get criticized for having a stop-work order and their construction not going on, and the restaurant not being able to open. That's on them. That is solely on them. The fact of the matter is, they built the columns and put them where they were. They do not meet the requirements as was set. You also notice that language in here talked about the placement of the building. Well, I don't know if the council knows, but that building is actually over the property line. The property line was 66 feet, .5, .3 inches on the north side, and 66 feet, 7.3 inches on the south side. They built it to 68. That's our property. They've encroached on our property with the building. They've encroached on our property where they put the pillars. Their footings, which are now depicted in the revised plan, go further onto city property than what originally was planned. So these problems are not city-created problems. These problems are problems of a sloppy construction company and a sloppy oversight of that by the architect and the owner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, hearing nothing else, we'll turn over to city manager for her portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Council Trizano took my lengthiest report item of the evening, so I will move on to my shorter report items. My first one is that if you haven't noticed already, a snow fence has been going up at the park down by the water already. We have already had over two-foot snowdrifts over the weekend. Oh, my gosh, snowdrifts. You can tell where my mind is going with the temperature changes. Sanddrifts already, starting last Friday and over the weekend. Our Parks Department and some of our DPW crew members have pulled cars out of the sanddrifts already, so unfortunately, that sand fence and snow fence is already needed. It has nothing to do with the fact that tourist season is over. It's just that the winds have shifted, and unfortunately, we live in Michigan, and this is what we have to deal with. We have several job openings, so if you know anyone looking for a job, please direct them to our website. So unfortunately, that sand fence and snow fence is already needed. It has nothing to do with the fact that tourist season is over, it's just that the winds have shifted, and unfortunately, we live in Michigan, and this is what we have to deal with. We have several job openings, so if you know anyone looking for a job, please direct them to our website. We have multiple job openings in multiple departments, Clerical, Department of Public Works, our water plant, I think there may be another one as well, I'm not sure, but if you know anybody looking, please direct them to our website, we are hiring. I usually do not comment on these things, but this one did go public, so I will mention it. Many of you saw that one of our firefighters is involved in a legal case, and that firefighter was suspended without pay the next day, and that that action will remain until the legal case is resolved. So I just wanted to comment on that, since it is in the public realm at this point. I know we've talked about it before, but our Parks and Rec Master Plan Survey has been out for a few months. That master plan is a document that will be a document that we will refer to for the next five years. So if there is any input that you have on any of our parks, any changes, any thoughts, opinions that you might have, that you would like the city to refer to over the next five years, please, you can look on our Facebook page, I believe up on the counters, we have some cards which tell you how to fill out that survey. Please take the time and provide your feedback. If you don't do that, we will not be able to incorporate that into this guiding document, which will help us make decisions and determine how we spend money and what type of grants we apply for for the next five years. I also, for city councilors, I did receive a lengthy comment from a resident that I would like you all to take a look at, and if you have any additional input you would like me to provide to the resident, I will include it before I call the resident back. So I provided that as a laydown for you all. And as a reminder, the Bike, Scooters, and Coaster Toys Community Meeting is this Thursday, September eleventh, from five to six p.m. in this room, if you have any comment or would like to hear more about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to kind of go back and draw some more attention to the previous part of our agenda. I am so thankful that there are people in this city and around this city who do things on an everyday basis to promote the city and to help the city improve areas that need improving and those types of things. We have literally dozens of people each year that step forward to volunteer their efforts or volunteer their time to serve on boards and commissions, and with really no mention or no notoriety as well throughout the years. So I'm very, very thankful to those men and women that do that. Also very, very thankful for Mr. Anderson and being willing to come forward financially and could commit to replacing a feature or an amenity in the city in Cartier Park that people enjoyed. You don't have to be a, maybe a casual observer on Facebook to know that that gazebo is very important to folks, and the one that was there before was not in good shape. It had been placed there and reused from another location, so probably thirty years old. So just so thankful that he saw that. He did not seek, I don't know if his arm is still sore from being twisted or not, but being that he was, it was out of the ordinary for him to want to come up and, I think, present that information, but he thought it was important that people knew where that came from. So, you know, again, I appreciate Mr. Anderson and his expenditure and his provision of that amenity to the City of Luddington. And I just, it just kind of reiterates to me how many people are supportive of things that are happening, are supportive of the people that are giving their time. And I'm not just talking about people that serve on council, certainly that extends the Planning Commission, all sorts of boards and commissions that serve throughout this city. And I'm just very, very thankful. This is a great place to live. We are blessed to live here. It's not a perfect place, and these are not perfect people that serve, but it is a wonderful place to live and to raise families and to retire to. So it's a little longer than the commercial that it sounds like, but anyway, thank you to all that step forward and to do things constructive for this city. Again, it doesn't take a whole lot of effort to find fault with what other people are doing. The effort comes in coming and stepping forward and being those people that invest their time and do things and attempt to do things in a positive. I think of Gene and the senior citizens at the Senior Center on the Advisory Board and so many others. So thank you, thank you very much. At this time, we'll move on to a second round of public comment. We'll adhere to the same guidelines mentioned at the beginning of tonight's meeting, with the exception that each speaker will have two minutes. Request that anyone wishing to address the council, please step to the lectern, state your name, street address, or ward, city of residence, and organizational affiliation, if that's appropriate. Once you've done this, you'll be recognized for two minutes. Please remind you to speak directly into the microphone and address all comments to this chair.
We meet again, Jeff Henry. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair. I mentioned about the history, how important history is. This government, right here, with the exception of one guy over here, predates everybody. The government is here before just about everybody here. What you've learned, what we've all learned in Mason County, in West Michigan, is being uncovered, of some of the motivations. We owe it to look back on those motivations. When we look at law, we try to find out what the intent was. You are certainly aware of that. What was the intent of the law? What was the intent when people come back and they take the law over? And you don't know what's happened? Well, you need the evidence, and we're putting the evidence out there so that we can work together. Because when you see the evidence, when you see what happened, the history will matter. Because this history is happening right now. Conspiracy is what's existing. If it's provable, then it exists, and is provable. We're putting it out there. We're gonna show it to you. We're gonna show you what happened. We're showing the people what happened. They deserve to know. Not to be chided about something that's not on the agenda when it should be on the agenda, just to talk about it, just to be transparent. I congratulate Mr. Rada on fighting for your due process rights, because he fought for your rights. At the end tonight, I thank Mr. Rada.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Gene Kyle, three oh-four East Court Street, Luddington. Recently, I came to this podium and expressed some frustration. Tonight, I come to express appreciation, for I understand that there is going to be an outside button placed on the restrooms at Legacy Plaza. I am pleased to hear that, and I know a lot of people besides me will be pleased to hear that, and will be pleased to know that they can actually get in there if they have a disability that means they can't get in, if they're wheelchair-bound, or even if they're a mother pushing a baby carriage or whatever and holding a toddler and trying to figure out how to get in there. This will make things better and certainly give a better impression of Luddington to those who come to visit us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chad Beltkamp. I am the owner's representative for ASR Real Estate for the Andy's Building. Just out of the sake of transparency, I just wanted to mention to the council that our team has been and is more than happy to sit down at any time to talk through the curb issue, to find a resolution to this. I know that there has been multiple options that have been submitted, and we would love the opportunity to sit down and discuss those. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just a minute.
Tom Savansky, two oh-one and F-Fourth Street, Luddington, Michigan, honorary mayor of Fourth Ward. Mr. Mayor, city attorney, city manager, city attorney, chief of police, council members, thank you for what you do. You do a good job.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Good evening again.
Hi there. Tom Rada, Third Ward. On August sixth, I attended a special meeting of the city council, where this council opted to meet in closed session to discuss a legal opinion of an attorney who had never been firmly hired as council by the city council. For some reason, LPD Captain Mike Caveman ushered the five people in the lobby who were waiting for the council to reconvene outside. I stood outside that door right over there and was summarily harassed by the captain, telling me orally that I was trespassed off City Hall property, suggesting that I was in position to eavesdrop on your secret meeting. Rather than give me another letter of trespass, barring me illegally once again for setting foot on public property, he called in for other officers to back up his threats of using force and government power to remove me from where I was at, also threatening not to allow me back into the meeting once it opened again. Knowing how invested in violence the LPD has been during the Jones regime, I eventually gave in to the threats and thug power in order to move out to an area that the captain approved of. Three weeks later, I found out that I was going to be arraigned once again for a charge of disturbing the peace, subsection four, that says, "No person shall disturb, without lawful authority, any peaceful and lawful assembly or meeting of persons." Standing quietly outside this building, having my own piece disturbed by a police captain, threatening me with unlawful authority, has no elements of disturbing the peace, at least for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rada. Anyone else? Good evening again.
Daniel Johnson, five oh-three North Lavina Street. I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your comments on stepping forward. There is a bunch of people that have actually stepped forward, and this is a very good talent to live in, and the information that has been brought forward has been laid out pretty well. The information can only get acted on if it's read or understood. If the information that is presented has not been understood, questions should be raised, you know, in civil manner. I would just ask that the council apply this type of forthcoming to the information that's been brought forward. Get together, have a pow-wow. And this stuff with Andy's, was the building, was the city building inspector actually made aware of this, however many inches it was across the property line? Was he in direct contact with the construction people? These are all just common sense questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening.
Jeanie Hoakes, Rath Avenue, Third Ward. I just want to say, I love where I live. I have lived in several communities, five or six during my professional career. They were all wonderful places to live. Nothing can hold a candle to this town. And when, you know, we talked about Wayne and that wonderful heart and that wonderful gift he gave back for generations, and Mark's comments about how many people step up the community foundation. I don't care who comes to that community foundation and wants something, I don't care what the price tag is, it happens in this community. It's a community of giving and loving people. I love going down to Cartier Park Campground and just walking through there and watching all those people have fun. I'm very blessed that I look out my window at the marina, and I watch the boats go out, and it's absolutely breathtakingly beautiful. You know, I was mentioning to Kurt earlier how nice the cemetery looked, and you can only appreciate a beautiful cemetery when you go there because your heart hurts for somebody. You know, we are so lucky. The DPW does an amazing job in this community. The police force, we don't have any troops coming in, although if we did, we would host an event. But, you know, this is a wonderfully safe community, and I know I've said this many a group. Fifty-five years ago was my first wedding anniversary, and we spent it in our little pup tent out at Hamlin Campground, and I remember Mike and I walk in on the beach saying, "Wouldn't it be amazing if you lived here?" And I remember when we talked about that again after we did thirty years ago, live here. So thank you to all of our people who make this city what it is, and you people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, then we'll move on to miscellaneous business.
Your Honor, if I may, about two days after the pavilion opened, we happened to be taking a walk there, and lo and behold, there were probably between ten and a dozen women knitting and crocheting. Turns out, they used to use the previous pavilion and were kind of disappointed when it was no longer available, and I have to say, they were very pleased with the replacement. That pavilion will get lots of use for lots of different things, and I think the people appreciate what Wayne has done for the city.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one good thing to share as we end tonight. Another fall season has arrived, although a little early this year. The cooler temperatures, the crisp smell of the air, and the leaves starting to change color all signal the changes to fall. School sports are in full swing, so be sure to enjoy a Friday night football game with a band playing and a hot dog from the concession stand, or a soccer game. Tennis is fun to watch, and golf is difficult to spectate, but a golf course is a beautiful place to walk and support the athletes. And if it is getting too chilly outside, go inside to a steamy pool and watch a swim meet. Whether you take a color tour, enjoy a sporting event, or watch a colorful sunset, enjoy this fall season. Thanks.
Anyone else? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Council Wenceski, support by Council Stibbets. Any comments or questions? Anyone just dying to stay here? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.[1769.01]